Speaker, Emsen. Mr. Cove.
President.
Mr. Mack, Emsen, Ms. Polistrini here. Mr. Robinson.
President.
Okay, now, I do need a motion to accept electronic attendance for Mr. Kelly, who looks like he's joined. I'll entertain a motion to accept the electronic attendance of Mr. Eric Kelly's trustee for the village. So, questions, comments?
I was hoping there'd be a long, uh, sweat.
Ask which.
That's the.
I think, I think we could just do all in favor.
Yes.
Because it's not, it's not electronic yet. Just take the roll call, please. I saw the little kind of space.
Mr. Cove.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Polistrini. If it passes 3-0.
Welcome to the meeting, trustee Kelly.
Thank you, just as a note, there's no video.
It's better that way. I look better with my camera on. All right, everyone, so, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
The student pledge of allegiance.
Okay, awesome, let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As mentioned, there's no one signed up to speak, so before you, you have the meeting minutes for February 1st, 2024. Can you repeat them at this time?
There is a couple of places where instead of saying roll call, it was all call vote. That just needs to be updated.
No, some of these, some of these, they're not roll calls.
They're all calls?
Yeah, some of the, if you.
Always that when we do.
That's when we do all in favor.
Okay, then never mind.
Before, when it was all electronic, where we had electronic attendance all the time, we had to do roll call all the time. And now that we're back, now we can do.
That's all call, I've just never seen all calls. And number nine, under our accounts payable, trustee Kelly moved to table. We just have to delete to approve. Okay.
Any other changes?
H, or number 12. Our chief pan announced that they have an tentative job offer, I'm thinking it's pending job offer.
Or a tentative.
A tentative. Although they could have been attentive.
They could be.
Yeah. That's all.
Any other changes tonight? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the changes presented by trustee Polistrini.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cove?
Aye.
Mr. Polistrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
All right, up next on our agenda, we have the promotion, squaring in of Officer John Rufo to the, the position of sergeant. So, before you, I invite you all to welcome Officer John Rufo, whom we will be promoting to sergeant tonight. Officer Rufo is a Hampshire resident and has worked for the Hampshire Police Department for the last two and a half years as a night shift officer, bicycle patrol officer, and he is our police department representative to the King County multi-jurisdictional honor guard. Officer Rufo came to the Hampshire Police Department in 2021 after a 20-year career with the Rosemont Public Safety Department, where he served in a cross, in cross-trained roles in law enforcement, fire protection, and emergency medical services. Officer Rufo is a United States Navy veteran who served on the USS Iowa. Officer Rufo graduated from the Notre Dame High School for Boys in Niles and attended the University of Illinois Chicago. Officer Rufo is joined tonight by his wife Caroline, parents Alan, Teresa, sister-in-law Margie, and brother Ian. My chief pan up to do the squaring in.
Aye.
Aye.
Please go around if you want to take.
Support the Constitution of the United States. I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of sergeant of the Hampshire Police Department.
Of the office of sergeant of the Hampshire Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
No, no, there's so much to make.
Who's going to pin the badge on your flag?
Beautiful wife Carrie.
Porch.
Only hurts for those.
It's thick material.
Four times. I hate that word. Now, we invite the family and the police officers in the room to take a picture with Sergeant Ruels.
No, you're already.
You guys are the ones with all the hands.
You know what? Chief Pan.
I'll get back in after you.
I just.
It'll take as long as you can.
Squeeze down.
Two rows.
And push closer to each other.
That's good.
There.
Looks like you like each other.
More? All right, we're good. Any family that wants to come up?
Chief Pan, could you just go before she's going to take a picture again?
All right.
Thank you. Notice she wants to take a picture and you got locked away. Thank you. Thank you. Never be. Oh, you guys first. Okay. All right, thank you. This is yours. Now move over just a little bit to each of your two seats. One of them has. Yeah, everybody else, oh, sorry, no, you're fine. Now all of them? Yeah. Well, she didn't love them more. Your family likes it. Are we good? They love each other. A program. That you're stirring, you're sticking with it. No. Do you have names now? And other duties at the same.
All right, thank you very much for coming. Anybody that came to this train that doesn't want to stay for the rest of this, now's your chance. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. Okay, everyone, next, we have the village managers report. Good evening, Mr. Edens.
Now, we would ask you, ask you to discuss and possibly to act on an ordinance approved in Tepsin that goes to Chapter 2, these regulations of municipal code regarding noise and nuisance regulations. You have before you in a chat this separate, pardon, prior meeting, or chief pan, I believe, turning, it's silly handed out to you, you knew it tonight, so if you're comfortable with what we've done, you can take an action if you're not able to.
So, there were some changes that were proposed at the sound ordinance. It seems that they've been made on the board, I hope. This addresses most of the board's concern, the biggest one is snow blowers, refuse, sale of loud vehicles and equipment, and then modernize some of the language within the ordinance, specifically pertaining to phonographs and intercom systems and any track players and mimeographs and that kind of thing.
Big trolls.
Big trolls.
Um, that is all I'm taking.
Mr. Mayor, on page four, two dash twenty-five dash five miscellaneous noise sources.
Sure.
Last sentence or last part of it, if such equipment is audible from any adjacent property used for residential hospital purposes, within, within 600 feet is my concern. If I stand at a lot line, is that where the 600 starts?
It would be indoors, correct?
Between 10 and 7, within 600 feet of any building used for residential, from any adjacent property used for residential. So it just.
It says or indoors, if such quick, it says or, or indoors, if such is audible from adjacent property. I thought that we had talked, and I think that the indoors wasn't there before. I thought we had talked about being able to hear it inside your home, because there was a big concern that we had had. So maybe you can walk us through the language, Mr. Rasselli.
The way this reads is, it's not from the lot line, it's from any building used for, so basically any home, not the lot line.
The inside, because that was a concern for trustee Kelly, as I recall, where he was listening to books on tape underneath his festoon lights on the patio, only was concerned that his neighbor could hear that from their backyard and call the police on him.
Okay. If I could then, and that's fine, I understand that. We've listed five different things down there, and so that, my thought was, so we don't have to come back and deal with any other other ones, could we add in any other electronic device that emits sound?
Absolutely no problem with that.
Is that too vague?
That's the point.
That is, that is the point. I think, I think rather than doing one through five like that, I think if you do any device, or maybe you put six, I don't know, however you want to do it, but that makes sense to me. You want to add six and.
We'll add six.
We'll add six, Paul, thank you.
I had a question about this, and I've read this a few times, but admittedly, I've kind of had a whirl with day. So let's say that there's like emergency circumstances within the village, right? Where we have lost power for days, let's say, hopefully it never happens, but then residents start setting up generators. You know, at that time, if there was that type of emergency, I'd imagine that the village president and the board could declare an emergency, and therefore, this ordinance wouldn't be in effect for that type of situation, correct?
You're correct. I'm sorry. Was it true you were listening?
Yes.
No, I was, you know, I was checking to see if there was a, there was a drop.
Or, or for that matter, like during a snowstorm or something like that, if we have a resident that might be on oxygen or something, and so one of the first things they do is fire up their generator.
It's correct.
Because we wouldn't declare an emergency for that, but if there was a loss of power or extenuating circumstances, is that something that, within this ordinance? I mean, I would, I would imagine if your neighbor doesn't have power, and you don't have power, and your neighbor is trying to keep their oxygen machine going.
You know, you're pretty bad neighbor. Your neighbor was getting oxygen.
No, I, I understand, but, but these are the things that we think about here, right? Because those are unfortunately, sometimes the phone calls that we get.
Yeah, it would, I, let's start with the beginning. Any emergency in the declaration thereof would supersede and mitigate anything that would be imposed by this.
And so if an officer is called in that situation, and there's, I'm running my generator to heat the house, or I'm running my generator, that would be classified as an emergency-type situation, right? That would, that, that to me would be a dollar.
People in Florida, got you, plug it in.
I think just I'm running my generator.
I mean.
It's just an emergency.
I would think so. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, and if we're comfortable moving forward with this, because there's discretion there, there's discretion from the police officers.
And if you look under nuisance, noisy, nuisance, noises, excuse me, I believe that that would be where it fall under. It would be unlawful, it shall be unlawful to cause or create an unnecessary unusual noise at any time which unreasonably annoys, injures, or endangers the comforter pros, unless such noise is necessary for the protection or preservation of property or of health, safety, or life of some person.
To me, that, that's the exception. Good enough for me. You guys comfortable moving forward with this?
I think it looks good. I think you guys will, your hard work will go down.
So we are going to, what was the section, I apologize, trustee Polistrini, this 25.
Yeah, two dash twenty-five.
Dash five, we're going to add number six, and it's going to be any electronic.
And any other electronic device that emits sound.
Okay, so that's the only change we're proposing tonight? Are you guys comfortable voting on, voting on this with that? Trustee Kelly, I'm calling on you specifically because you're electronic.
Yeah, I have two, two points or two questions. One is on that same section that trustee Polistrini was just speaking to, where it says 600 feet of any building used for residential or hospital purposes or indoors of such equipment is audible from an adjacent property used for residential or hospital purposes. So we added indoors, but we're saying basically, and I just want to make sure my, my understanding of this is correctly, if you are listening to any of these equipment from indoors, indoor, whatever that building is, and it can be audible from an adjacent property used for residential or hospital purposes, then it's in violation of this ordinance, and I think that's a little backwards from what we were talking about. What we were talking about is if it was audible indoors of the adjacent properties, and this makes it look like, the way it's worded, that the, the sound is being emitted from indoor, indoors of a building and is audible to a property, an adjacent property.
If we added the word indoors to the second qualifying clause, used for indoors of such equipment is audible indoors from any adjacent property reused for residential or hospital.
Well, I, I think we moved, I think we moved indoors to the wrong section, or to the wrong part of the sentence. I think it's, we're talking about outdoor sound, and then this should be that it's, it can be heard indoors at an adjacent property, within 600 feet, or it can be audible from indoors of an adjacent property.
Then let's strike indoors there, or move it from between, from any, it'll read, from any indoor adjacent.
In. Well, that's still not a.
Doors from any. In, I will.
Audible indoors from any adjacent property. So between audible and from is where indoors should be. The second piece is, if we're talking about 600 feet, when we scroll down to page 13 of the packet, I think it's page 13, with exemptions under 22 dash 25 dash 8E, where it says village authorized events, including fireworks displays, concerts, and parades. Is my understanding correct then, because there are almost all businesses, when I did the distance in Google Maps, are within 600 feet of a residence, except for some in the industrial parks? Is it my understanding then that any outdoor concerts would be, or any of these would need village authorization for each of those to ensure that they are not within violation of this?
So like a parking lot party.
For example, if Har, for example, if Newman's is having an outdoor band, they need to get village authorization, and I would assume we'd have a form, so it's on file that they had authorization, or there'd be an application, but they, because it's an outdoor, an outdoor concert event, whatever they want to call it, because there's a band playing outdoors, and they are within 600 feet, they would have to fill something out with the village, apply for it, and be approved to be able to have that, correct?
Well, that section, if you read it, 225 dash eight, does not apply to defiling our exempt from the regulations in this section, and it starts with dash six and dash seven.
Okay, all right, so then, to that point, dash five means that any of those businesses cannot have any of those things going on outdoors.
After 10:00 P.M.
Correct.
It's so that Newman's, Newman's would need.
And that, that includes Coon Creek Days.
No, because that would be a village authorized event.
That doesn't, as the village attorney just pointed out, two dash twenty-five dash five is not included in what can be exempt from noise regulations.
Section there exempt.
That's why we have the indoor, I mean, that's why we have the indoor in the beginning, because Coon Creek is not indoor. But we could put it in and say that it's exempt.
Well, I mean, neither, neither is a band playing at Newman's, that's outdoors as well, but it would, are we saying that that wouldn't be in violation?
We could, to solve this problem, why don't we enlarge to the exemptions under 225 dash eight to include subsection five, and that, I believe, would solve the problem.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I, I'm just bringing it up because I'm seeing that, I, I didn't know how we were managing that part of it. So if we are doing that exemption, then, is my understanding correct? To go back to it, let's say we add two dash twenty-five dash five to, to include the exemption, that those establishments that are within 600 feet of a residential or a hospital as set forth in 225 dash five would need to apply for and be approved by the village to have a, a permit or some type of application to approve that outdoor event?
Yes. It's in section eight, what, what, we're including that to be the exemption that would apply then to 225 dash five, but if, this, and I don't, excuse my naivety. I just don't know. Does Newman's get a license at the beginning of the year to be able to play outdoor events?
To get a license every, for each event?
Each event, okay, it's not like an annual license where.
Do they do that now?
Yes.
Okay, so like their parking lot parties and stuff, that gets, that's not an additional staff process? That's what the, that was my only concern.
No, it's just a special, that's just like, excuse me, just like Coon Creek or any other special.
Shut down, holiday on state.
Right, holidays.
I was just concerned with adding that and then making the businesses obtain approval, if that was going to be an additional staff process, so we're doing that anyway, so adding, so.
You and I are aware that there are, there is a potential of another business coming in town once you do this three nights a week without your sound, so you should have that in mind.
Well.
That won't be a special events.
I think we'll figure that out when we get there, but we need to write the ordinance for now, right?
Well, I just, to, to that point, Mr. President, we're going to have to figure it out before they can do anything then, because unless there is some type of process for that, they would be in violation.
Correct, but then at least it's not like a free-for-all, I mean, we're, we're.
That's concerning a little bit when we're recruiting, working with business coming into town, do we have to say, oh, when you, if you come to town, we'll change your ordinance?
No, I don't necessarily, okay, I understand. So where's, what's the process look like then? For this type of thing?
I'm not really sure that we should limit that type of sound, because that's pretty prevalent with Newman's, as well as could be somebody else coming in town.
Is that something we could look into, changing our liquor code to restrict?
It could be, it could be included, I would think.
Yes, absolutely, that's how I normally see it. In some places, every time you have an outdoor event, and I just, I can draw upon our Newman's values, if it's helpful. In some localities or locations, you have, every time you have an outdoor event, you come in and you apply. And some, it says you could have outdoor events Tuesday through Fri, Tuesday through Sunday, and through the months of May through October, weather permitting, that's a new.
Is that, is that, is that a, is that a yearly permit, or is that baked into the liquor license?
Well, it's based in the liquor license, which then in a way becomes a yearly permit, right? Because you get.
So I guess, I guess maybe that's my, so I think that that's probably the way we should approach it for the local businesses, because then this becomes a non-issue. And because then if you want to do something like, you know, on a regular basis, then you've already applied for that in your license. The question is, is do we need to change this ordinance to refer back to the liquor license?
Or, let me just add real quick, we do, the special event liquor license now allows two events per year, only two.
Understood.
I just want everybody else to.
Okay.
So if we, we could amend that category, or we could create another category?
I would think that we could just look at the liquor license that we, classifications that we have now, and maybe include some of the sound stuff in what we have going to address what we have already in the community, and then it becomes a non-issue unless the board wants to handle it a different way.
What if your business does not require you to have a liquor license, and you still want to do that?
Then you would get a, then you would get a special event permit like we already have.
Okay.
And that would address the types of businesses that have these on the regular, that would be a part of their liquor license. And then there's a, there's an avenue for anybody else, and then there's the protection for the residents that live in and around this.
When, when a business like Newman's gets a event license like that, how much do they pay?
$50, I think, for one, for one.
I think that, I think it's worth investigation, at least. Maybe we decide as a board that they just need to do the life, the, the special events permit, but if there's a model that another community uses that incorporates it into license classifications, it might not, to your point about not having to change it or not having to get everything approved every time we have special event venue, if you will.
Does a special event permit require notification of businesses and/or residents within a certain distance of the one applying for that?
I don't believe so. That's in our, that's in our lot party regulations, but I don't believe it's similar, especially.
I'm concerned, just, just to be careful as we move forward, it's, I'd hate to, to put it in something where they don't have to come back to us, and they can, can be out there every single night.
Yeah, we have no control.
Yeah.
And if I, if I own a, if I'm buying a liquor license and I'm paying $1,200 a year, you're buying one for $1,200 a year, you're having six events, but we're both paying the same money.
No, I understand that completely, but I'm saying that if there's a type of establishment that's looking, would want to open in the village, that's more of an event venue versus a regular bar like we have, then I think it warrants the conversation of how will the towns do it? And so like, if that's a concern of, you know, rather than changing the ordinance for everybody, maybe similar to what we did with the gambling cafe on State Street, where we could create the classification, put further restrictions on it as well. So, you know, and so if we had an event venue or something like that that wants to come to town in order to sell liquor or have these type of events, here are the, here's the rules that you need to follow. Kind of like when the gambling cafe came in, and we said, you can't just be a bar, or anybody can be in there, you have to be 21.
I think we should pass this now, and like our village manager and our village attorney figure out whatever the heck you got to fill out for.
I'm thinking that that's just the homework side of it, right? Like, let's look into the rest of it. But I agree with trustee Cove.
Liquor license control.
Yes, and we'll make sure, it will, and we'll also, whatever change we make in the liquor code, we'll make sure that specifically calls out this.
And we have to come back and amend this.
Absolutely. Hundred percent. Okay, so just for cleaning up, the exceptions, we're going to add 25 dash, or two dash twenty-five dash two as an exception. We're going to add in that same clause that has to be audible indoors, and then in that 25 dash. twenty-five dash, uh, two dash twenty-five dash two, we're gonna add any electronic device that produced sound.
No, it's, it's actually two twenty-five dash five.
Two twenty.
You kept saying two, and I think.
I apologize.
I think all of them were supposed to be.
Five, it is five. It is five, I'm just reading my scribble notes here. So those are the proposed changes to the ordinance that's in front of you. I will take, in, uh, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance with the changes we just spoke about.
Oh.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Ms. Powell Streeting?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we ask your consideration for a resolution to waive the requirements and accepting a quote for a VACON or search protection devices in the thickening building at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. You have an agenda supplement in your packet from Miss Lyons, uh, Laurie, which you can walk through. Mr. Hedges, can you open that door? I think you're sure of that hallway.
Um, so VACON is, um, a vendor that we've been using for many years and provides a lot of, um, electronic systems to, um, protect our various, uh, water and wastewater facilities. And, um, so the quote is from them, and, um, it is over twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're requesting we waive the formal bidding requirements. And, um, this is a little bit more than the amount that was budgeted. However, uh, we're monitoring the amount spent in that line item, and we still have funds available there, so.
The only thing I'd like to add is that search protection is a real high priority because we're obviously protecting our equipment. We had, did not have, but still don't have as much as we should, so this is a real high priority.
Is this the company that added all the stuff and come in and was screwing us on Harmony Road at the water treatment?
Um, they have done all the work under search protection, yeah.
So to go to another vendor would create another mess.
Well, these guys are familiar with our.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They know our system.
That's what I'm saying, like, it's a very specialized type of equipment based on our systems. That's my answer. Does anyone have any questions for Miss Lyons or Mr. Hedges or Mr. Coth?
I just, I have, I'm just, I, I'm fine with all of the stuff and, and the purchase and, uh, waiving of the big. I'm just trying to come to terms with, uh, the budget includes more than a hundred and sixty-five thousand for surge protection. So starting with that, we're, we've got forty-five thousand nine hundred here. That leaves a hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred, but yet it's saying that there will be forty-nine nine thirty-five remaining.
So we have already spent on other projects, smaller projects.
Okay.
Um, for surge protection this year to date, so that's why there's only that forty-nine nine ninety-five left.
Yes. Okay, did it have anything else in there?
I just wanted to assure you that despite spending five thousand dollars more than we had budgeted, there still is money remaining, so.
Okay. I'm good.
Anyone have any other questions for Miss Lyons? I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve a resolution to waive the bidding requirements and accepting a quote from VACON for search protection devices. So.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Powell Streeting?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Motion, yes, four zero.
Next, we have some staff reports here. You'll see in your packet, we have the financial report, we have the building report, and we have the streets report. I will ask you to review those at this time, and if there are any questions, staff is available for conversation.
Financial report, sorry, go ahead, trustee Polish.
You go right ahead. There's a pause.
On the, um, revenue side, I know that these reports, because they're still in the current ERP system, automatically do the even division across twelve months when they look at year-to-date budget. So I know we take that with a grain of salt. So if we look at total village income, sorry, this is on page twenty-one of the packet. We look at total paid, uh, total village revenue of nine point two million, and we've got a budget of twelve point eight million. Um, Miss Lyons, how are we on target as far as hitting the twelve point eight? Are we expecting additional, uh, what, three point six million in revenue coming in? Are we expected to, to, to be over? What's, where, where are you seeing us by the end of this year estimation-wise?
So there are a couple of things that, um, may not happen that are large that I can think of. For instance, um, the, uh, Rin and Park Stormwater, um, project is in this budget. Um, I believe that that total is around seven, seven hundred thousand for the Rin and Park.
Yes, seven fifty.
Yeah, seven fifty. Um, it's all, you know, a matter of timing. If we don't believe it's gonna happen by April thirtieth, which I highly doubt, um, we'll be putting, um, that item back in the budget for next year. So there are some known items that will not, will not happen. Um, but generally, um, yeah.
So that's for revenue? We wouldn't receive the grant money? And you're saying there, there are known items? Are there any other larger known items that we know are not coming in, and, and what would those be?
So that's the biggest item that I can think of.
What about the Safe Routes to School grant? We don't know where we're getting that, do we?
That will not be the issue.
Yeah.
So the, the Safe Routes to School, the Illinois, the state contribution or the grant that we want for that, doesn't sound like we're gonna get that this year either. That's a substantial amount of money as well.
Yeah, but was that in our budget as revenue?
The engineering was definitely in, and I believe that the construction was in as well.
Yeah, it was talked about that it would be completed by the summer of this year, and it's not. We haven't, they haven't even talked about it. It's one of those things that the state says, sure, you can have the money, when we want to give it to you.
Okay, so are we, do we receive additional, um, property tax revenue between now and the end of the fiscal?
No. We're over budget on that. I always budget a little bit, you know, like ninety-five percent of our expected levy versus, um, actual dollar from Congress, so.
That's what I thought. I just, the only reason why I'm bringing it up and asking the question is I know we talked about the fact that we currently are on track to have a pretty healthy surplus this year. Um, but when I look at the total revenue for the village in a three point six million dollar gap between now, not gap as in we're not gonna get it, but three point six million dollar delta between the year-to-date actual and where we budgeted to be on April thirtieth, right? April thirtieth, twenty-four? So in like two and a half months? Um, if the streets or the safe route to school and the park and Rin grant, you know, even if that makes up one point five million, which I'm just throwing crazy numbers out there, I don't know what it adds up to, that's still a pretty healthy delta, and I'm just wondering where we're estimating that kind of revenue comes from if we're not getting additional property taxes.
Um, honestly, you're kind of catching me off guard. I mean, I know about that, uh, Rin and Park thing is a, is a large item that I know that, you know, is definitely contributing to that dollar amount. I'll have to get back to you with.
Okay, so I, I guess I can word it differently to Miss Lyons, and I didn't mean to catch you off guard on this. Do you have any concerns of us take out the, the large one for Park and Rin? Do you have any concerns of us coming into being close to what we thought we would have as far as revenue minus the two grants that we don't know, or we feel we're not gonna get?
Can I simplify that to say, do you think that we're no, we're no longer to have a healthy surplus, we'll have a deficit? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking if, if our revenue, if our income is going to come in at what we thought the budget would be when you take out those two items? So if our, if our budget's twelve eight, and you take out those two items, that gives us a new budgeted amount, because now we're saying we know that they won't come in. So whatever that delta is, take those things out as if they were never in the budget. Do you feel or have confidence that the village is going to generate the revenue that we had thought that it was gonna generate this fiscal?
Mr. Kelly, can I try this? The, the typical revenues from sales tax, income tax, government distributed fund, all those, all those, uh, projections, I believe, I believe Laurie and I would agree that those are on schedule or maybe ahead of schedule. Um, if we take out the revenue and expenditures for the, for the grant, the six hundred and fifty, that's due to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yes, our total revenue will go down, but that doesn't impact the forecast for the other funds. Does that make sense?
No, I, I understand that part, and that's what I was asking was, even when you take those out and you take it out of the budget and you take it out of the actual, are we feeling that we're on target for every other revenue stream that we were estimating? Because there was discussion over the past couple of meetings where we felt we were gonna have pretty healthy fund balances, so when we go over on things like potentially going over budget for the surge protection, um, I will only speak for myself, it makes it easier to approve those type of things, knowing that we were budgeting a surplus because we were, um, there was more revenue coming in because there was more building than had been estimated, there was more property tax than had been estimated. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, if we are still thinking we could end up where ahead of where we thought we were if you take those grants out.
Mr. Kelly, I, I don't believe we, um, ever indicated that, um, the revenue streams that Laurie's forecasted in the budget are still, still expected, uh, to meet the budget. So no, we're not, but, but what I really want to say is that, um, I don't believe we, we have actually asked you overspending any of the line item. Laurie explained earlier is that we're overspending for surge protection, but in that particular line item, we're still on the budget. So we haven't, if we ask you to spend over budget, we'll make a point to say that, and we haven't done that yet. So our regular revenue as budgeted should be adequate, and yes, I, I do believe personally, I think Laurie might as well, that some of our revenue streams will come in ahead of budget, but we're not counting on that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just jump on top of that, because, you know, it was last month or the month before, we, we added some things for the public works that needed it, they were items that were not planned for, for maybe the next budget year, the next budget year. And then we did approve those, and I think that's what trustee Kelly is, is kind of thinking about, is that we approved some of those, knowing that we needed them, but they weren't in this budget year, they were in another budget year that was expected down the road. And so we approved them, knowing that we had surplus.
So I think, uh, an item that I think you're thinking of is the snowplow. We had the opportunity to buy a snowplow.
No. The Public Works water.
The media replacement.
Yeah, I'm not gonna know what all of them were.
I think it was the media department.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Then I apologize, water department did that.
Um, so if we, in the case of the enterprise farms that kind of stand alone, despite being in this twelve million dollar overall budget, um, we will make sure that in total, they're even keel. So if we authorize medium replacement for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we will take it out of someplace else. We won't overspend by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund.
Okay.
Is that good for you, trustee Kelly?
Yeah, I'm good for now, thanks.
I have three questions.
Okay.
Let's just go through them. Um, and ours are, our packets are numbered, so I'm gonna go with the first page of the, um, of your report.
Okay.
Um, at the very bottom, the pension trust fund. And I'm just a little concerned with the fact that seven months ended, we had year-to-date budgeted four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six forty-nine, and actual it was one sixty-two, three ninety-four.
So, um, we've had some withdrawals from the pension fund, and, um, when I budget for withdrawals, all I do is look at last year, at year end, who has funds remaining that has, has the ability to withdraw, and I budget for that dollar amount. I don't project that we're going to lose police officers, additional police officers that will withdraw.
Okay.
So that's, that's the main difference there.
Okay, so that's what pulled out extra money we were.
Yes, that and, um, uh, we have had a disability, um, claim, and so it's the village's pension fund obligation to obtain independent medical evaluations of the individual that is claiming of disability. And so those were, um, more expensive than projected, so, yeah. Um, on the positive side, um, the fund is doing a little bit better on the investment side right now, so, you know, there are some upsides.
And, and all the investments are doing phenomenally, so that was a very positive piece of info. Um, on page two of, of the report, um.
You can just list the fund at the very top of the page and the bottom of the, yeah, so the very top of the page would be general fund revenues, oh, one, is that the very, the top black box?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that helps when we're looking.
Okay.
Hard looking, I apologize.
That's okay. The, the, the second general fund expense for, for one then, um, my concern was the contractual services on, on both that one for administration as well as for, um, the streets department. And I just didn't know what the contractual services were, especially with the administration one that was budgeted for three seventy-four, five twenty-six, and ended up year-to-date so far as five fifty-four. And I think, um, and I think I didn't mean to do, I didn't mean to do street department, I meant to do police department for contractual services. And I know we've had some contractual services, and that one, um, for police, we thought was two oh three, nine oh two, and it's in essence, two sixty-fourty-four.
So the police one I can speak to right off the bat.
Okay.
That is, uh, legal and other professional services, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that is not included then in the one for administration?
Um, so that's not included in the one for administration? No, they're completely separate.
Okay.
We, we charge expenses by department. Um, so any legal expenses that were incurred for police scanners are recorded in the police department.
Okay, so then for the administration, where, where.
Let me look that up for you. Um, yes, it's, it's way over. Let me figure out what exactly is included in that that's caught, you have to go over.
So, um, you mentioned that it was, uh, legal services, is that when, when you look at this tabulation, does this include what's billed back to the developer, or is this just total cost?
No, it does not include any of that.
Okay, so, okay, that's just what.
And, and it was police that I was speaking specifically with respect.
No, I'm talking about like an administration, let's say like legal is included or some other, other, like engineering or something of that nature, because that would be loved in there too. When we look at this tabulation, that does not compete to what's billed back to the developer. This is just total amounts, period.
They're village responsibilities, they would not be developer responsibilities.
Okay, so this is just. Okay, perfect.
We can come back to this, I'll get you that information, okay? Thank you.
Um, okay, on page five of the report then, under, um, uh, public use fees, oh, six, and, uh, the impact fees, uh, transportation impact fees just below it, my concern was with the license fines and permit fees that had come in, and, and it's on revenue, so that's always a positive thing anyway, but it's like almost three times the amount that we expected for license fines, permit fees for public use, as well as for transportation.
So those are related to new home, uh, permits that we receive impact fees for.
Okay.
Those are village impact fees, both public use and transportation. Um, those, I mean, we have two hundred and ninety-one building permits that were applied for and paid for in two thousand, uh, that's calendar year, um, twenty twenty-three, that is three times what I projected.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Transportation fees are caught up in that too?
Yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, those are my own questions, okay? And I'll get back to you in just a moment.
Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions on the building report or streets report? Thank you, Miss Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Khan, for the building report. Thank you, Public Works, for the streets report. I guess.
Very busy streets report.
No, no one's here from Public Works, so we'll name trustee Coth. Um, next, you'll have the accounts payable, personnel, um, in the amount of, I've got all my paperwork here. Here it is. Thank you. $159.82. Do we have any questions about the 182? Entertain a motion to pay the accounts payable to personnel in the amount of 182, $159.82. Questions, comments, concerns?
Need a second.
Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you call the board please?
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Ms. Powell, Streeting?
Hi.
Motion, yes, four zero.
Okay, next you have the regular accounts payable in the amount of 370,201.93.
I have two questions, page 15, bottom of page.
15, bottom of page.
Five grand or near five grand for paid legal services? What kind of legal services?
Hey, I just lost it again.
This is Passarelli. This is for our, our union and police attorney.
Yeah, labor managers.
And then the next page, page 16, second from the bottom. I guess I should ask Dave. Replace battery, $403. Is that for one of the big trucks, I hope?
Some police department expense.
Kind of battery we buy for $400? I'd like to have one.
Well, I don't want it installed. I talked to Jim about that, I remember what it was. There was a reason, but I.
It can't be a car battery.
I can get back to you. No, it's a car. It's, it is, but.
It's one of the Durangos, there's two of them you replaced.
There was a reason, I can't remember what it was. I can get back to you on that.
I know that when I looked to replace the battery, my wife said it was like 300 bucks because there's two batteries, one for the car, one for the start stuff. I do my own installation. I figured that.
That probably is just a battery. So we'll, we'll confirm it to you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of 370,201.93.
Sorry.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you go on please?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Ms. Powell, Streeting?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Yes, four zero.
All right. Next, we have some new business. And it seems that there's an attorney update, so we'll put.
There's what?
Mr. Passelli, I understand.
Thank you. So I have been in conversation with the attorney, Scott Richmond, who represents EEI with regard to their standard contract. Remember, a couple of meetings ago, there was some confusion about some of the standard terms. I'm waiting to hear back from him. I did speak to his client on Friday morning, and he said that he'd authorized Mr. Richmond to send me back a document with revisions. The two major revisions that we talked about, and this stems from the conversations that we had with regard to their standard form contract, was adding language that ensures that in all instances, the specific scope of their work supersedes any of the terms and conditions. Remember, we talked about their contract. It was the determining condition, seems as though the exception wherein would take out and not control for the actual review of work that they were doing. So he agreed with me. He said that it was a change law overdue, so he was going to recommend that to his client. I believe that they are, I'm on board with that. And the second big change that we talked about was environmental. If you remember when we talked about the terms and conditions previously, they would just stop and report to us when they were environmental. He was very amenable to it, as was his client when I spoke to him, that they would cooperate with us to find a solution with regards to environmental. So it's not just the work that stops, but we're going to work together. They've been the village engineer almost for as long as there's been a village, is my understanding. So they know that they're the trust back there in the relationship there. I look forward to presenting to you a, these two changes and any other changes that we talked about at one of the upcoming meetings after I get back to the department. So thank you.
One question, Mr. Passelli, then?
Yeah.
For the, the contract itself then, I mean, I didn't look at the date, did it end already? Or we're just doing this ahead of time, or is there?
Respectively.
Okay, so there's a contract that's still in place?
Correct.
Okay, I assume that's what I asked.
For cost and time efficiencies, I want to make sure that we're comparable with the EEI contract going forward because they'll attach the standard form contract. And remember, it was a, it was a unique contract, I think, the last time. It was more of a soft services, rather than hard construction or production documents services. So I want to make sure it covers both. And I mentioned that to him, I said, you can't just have one cookie cutter contract for these things, as you know, and he agreed. So I think we're going to have a good product by the time we're done going through it. So thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the attorney update? I have an update on the attorney. It was his birthday this week, and we turned busy. And while I heard that other boards have sung happy birthday to him, I am not going to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that what you're saying?
Do we have a silly hat around here?
We could make him, you could make him wear a silly hat. But anyway, I'd like to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other new business or other announcements?
Can we circle back to the contractual services?
Oh, man, bring the bears down?
Really quickly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so the biggest difference is about $100,000, $105,000 in building inspection services. And then the only other line item that is currently over budget compared to where we should be, you know, like at this year-to-date, is legal services, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Maybe I should take back the happy birthday. No, I'm kidding. Let's see, any other announcements tonight?
Do you have meeting reports?
You know, we could. I skipped over it. Do we have any committee reports this evening that anybody wants to present?
BDC?
Trustee Kelly? I don't think you were at the.
Yes, I was at the BDC meeting. The BDC met, I'll actually report on both of my committees. The BDC met yesterday, and the discussion was that there was a couple of things discussed. One was the current status of projects for approved facade grants. And there are some that are looking like because of weather, they may not be finished before the end of this fiscal. So at some point, there may need to be a discussion with the board on how that affects next year's fiscal budget. I know that the, there will be conversations with those businesses that may have that delay in having them send something to the village board to explain the delay. There is, it was also discussed that within the program rules, it does states, state that all work needs to be done within six months of the approval of the project or the grant application. And so there were, to our recollection, none of the current projects were approved less than six months from the end of our fiscal year. So technically, they should all be done if they're going to be eligible. However, there are extenuating circumstances that may require that they come to send something to the board for an extension, which then may put it into the next fiscal year. And there was also discussion then because the application states that they agree to follow all of the rules and regulations as outlined within the details of the facade grant program. But on the application itself, it doesn't, they're not signing to any time other than it references those rules and regulations, which then that's where the time period is at. So the, the committee discussed having that specifically added into the language of where they're physically signing so that it's, it's upfront and evident to them and not a, while it's still a true statement to say that they are notified of this timing, it makes it a little bit more upfront for them. So that was one of the discussions. Any questions on that one? Okay, there was also discussions on those that have either expressed interest or are in the process of putting together an application that would be a part of next fiscal year. And the BDC's desire to have the facade program still included or considered for inclusion in the budget because there is pretty strong interest from the community for a variety of projects, especially from those that have never applied before. And so I am relaying that message to the board as well. Any questions on that?
Yes, didn't we talk at the last meeting or the meeting before, or the last two meetings, about next year's grant money not being available and we were going to use it in-house?
Yeah, it was one of the discussions that we've had about if we have to find revenue or if we have to find funding for some of these capital projects. Is that one of the things that we consider ending so that it can go towards the capital projects? And I think that will be one of the discussions when staff presents their options for revenue to help cover capital expenditures in our first budget committee meeting. You are absolutely accurate, trustee Cole. That is one of the things that we discussed that would potentially need to be cut. I think we discussed that. We discussed things like funding concrete days, things like that. Any other questions for BDC?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll wait, is budget next? I, I don't have the note from.
Yeah, budget's next.
Budget committee update, budget committee is meeting next Wednesday, the 21st. It is a committee of the whole, so the entire board is invited to attend. It is at 6:30 at Village Hall. And its focus will be the capital expenditures as presented by staff as well as their options for consideration on paths to revenue or how to fund the capital projects that, that have been identified and needed. So that will be the focus for the meeting on the 21st. Any questions?
I wanted to let everybody know that there is a police pension board meeting held in this room that same evening from 5 until they're done. But their meetings are generally less than an hour, so there should not be a conflict at all. But you might not want to come 45 minutes early. Welcome, but you'll be in a pension meeting, which we cut on. A little different.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, trustee Kelly. Thank you, board. Thank you, staff. Motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you call the board please?
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Ms. Powell, Streeting? Hi. Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.